Okay, this is the, uh, this is a joint, uh, general government subcommittee town council meeting on Thursday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. The time is six P. M. We're meeting in the veterans' room. Uh, please note that it's possible a quorum of the town council may be present and discuss the agenda items, but voting rights shall be limited to subcommittee members in attendance. Agenda item one is called to order. Uh, agenda item number two is roll call. Counselor Chanier.
Yeah.
Uh, citizen member Clemens.
Present.
Uh, counselor Dow and citizen member Julian are not present. Uh...
Julia notified me couldn't make the things, it has to be excused.
He's excused. Um, and, uh, Mr. Jovan is present as town manager. Um, I'm present as chairman, Steve, uh, councilor Steve Kelly. All right. First item is item number three, review and discuss the town manager's appointment of Javier Rivera of Webster, Massachusetts, as constable for the town of Southbridge pending successful background check, completion of state ethics, and proper bonding. Motion to recommend to town council for approval.
So move second.
Mr. Megan?
So we had a letter of interest or the application from Mr. Rivera wishing to be appointed as a constable for the town of Southbridge. Um, he, uh, provided an application for the constable. Uh, one of the members listed as a reference is attorney Robert Capera, which is a member of the bylaw, which means the requirements for appointment as a constable to have one member of the bylaw sign your appointment. Uh, Mr. Rivera, uh, had worked as a Southbridge Police Auxiliary Officer for a number of years. He has ties to the community. He also worked at Harrington Hospital as a public safety officer. I've known, uh, personally knew, uh, officer, well, he was former auxiliary officer Rivera when a short period of time that I was on the auxiliary police department. He is an upstanding young man. He does speak Spanish, which would be a benefit for our constables 'cause, uh, currently, I don't believe we have anybody that, uh, does speak Spanish. Is looking to, uh, learn how to become a constable and serve the community. And I met with him, uh, yesterday, and, uh, this would bring our constables up to four. The town, uh, bylaws state that we should have at least three, so there is no set number. We have three currently. So, we do know in the past that we did have problems trying to get a constable to serve process. When we were dealing with the Mill Street property, we had to use the sheriff's office, so this should just give us the capacity to use an additional individual.
Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion? So you know, all in favor? Unanimous. Agenda item number four, review and discuss a request to use three hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents in F Y twenty-five funds from account number zero zero one five four three dash five seven one one zero zero, conferences and meetings to reimburse the veterans' agent for a conference in F Y twenty-four. Entertaining motion to recommend to town council for approval.
So move second.
Mr. Manager?
So this would be Keith had attended a, uh, a conference late in the year, um, and did not encumber the monies. In fact, he did not have enough money in that account. Um, that's one of the issues that we brought forward, I think if you remember during the budget season to increase his, uh, line item for conferences and meetings because of the hotel. There's a lot of conversation about how much a hotel was to go down there. Um, and it's a state mandated, uh, conference. Um, and he tries to limit those costs. I don't know. He explained it to us. This is a bill for last fiscal year. We're paying for it out of this year's fiscal money, uh, so we will result towards the end of the year. Probably have to do a transfer because he's not gonna have enough at the end of the year, but it's, uh, just, uh, his reimbursement came in late, uh, after we had already closed, after the, uh, July fifteenth deadline to encumber monies and do transfers.
Any discussion?
I'll raise it.
All in favor? Unanimous. All present. Agenda item number five, review and discuss amending the Southbridge zoning bylaw section eight point seven, adult use marijuana establish, establishments to allow for hours of operation except between ten P. M. and eight A. M.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend this bylaw and change the time from ten P. M. and eight A. M. to eleven P. M. and eight A. M. The reason I'm suggesting that is to be in line with what the liquor retail establishments have in this community, which is an eleven o'clock, uh, time for retail sales of alcohol. I just feel that it would be compatible to them and be business worthwhile for the business.
Yes, here's a second one.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I may. This was a planning board recommendation for amendment that went through a public hearing. So I don't know if we'd have to refer it back down to them for an additional public hearing.
I don't, I don't know.
Might we take up the first, might we remove that, take up the, take it up, and then if you want to amend it, let's talk about why it is what it is first, and then, then if you want to amend it.
I'm okay with that.
Do you understand, because I think we should get our, our discussion out about it before amending something we haven't agreed to in any way.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Right. Any discussion?
Well, we have, we need a second on the original motion.
I'll withdraw the original motion.
Okay, so, so you, so you moved the first time, um, of the seventh.
On the first.
You just tried to give an amendment, right? So let's open it up for discussion.
Yep.
Okay, so, a motion?
I'll say.
Okay. Now where do we go?
So, Mr. Chairman, the public hearing was held at the request of the marijuana establishments. They were the ones that came forward and asked for the ten P. M. They did not ask for eleven P. M. They asked for the ten P. M. That was their request that they, they asked. I, I certainly couldn't see your point about eleven o'clock, but, um, they were the ones that asked for the ten P. M., not anybody else. I mean, that's why they, planning board entertained the ten P. M., unless you have different information from other retail establishments that are asking for eleven P. M.
Counselor Chanier?
Well, as far as the bylaws, from what I understand, the planning board sends those bylaws up to council. It's, it's council's decision whether to amend them, accept them, or move forward as presented. So, to go back to the planning board for another here, I don't, I don't think it's necessary. We are acting as the people, uh, at this point in time, I feel. So, the reason I suggested that was to be in line with, uh, what alcohol retail sales are. In town, they close at eleven o'clock, and, uh, my understanding is that Sturbridge allows the retail sale of marijuana at till eleven, and Charlton's still ten. I just think it's, it would be a good opportu, opportunity to make a business successful by allowing them the additional time instead of either going to Sturbridge or something like that. That's, that's my only reason. I have, I haven't spoken to anybody about this. This is something that when I first heard about it, that I thought, I actually thought of twenty-four hours, but then in reality, I, uh, I said if in line of the, uh, what liquor, liquor retail sales are.
Citizen, citizen member Clemens?
Thank you. So I was surprised to see anything come up on this 'cause I looked back at what we'd done, and I said, okay, yeah, this is just, you were bringing some more information on, there was some other, there was a reason for waiting at some point when we didn't do much about it the last time. 'Cause this came up the other meeting, the last meeting, about amending, and I thought there was something you had to bring back or whatever. I can't remember exactly what.
Oh, well, we have the host agreement that we, but that went to planning development.
Right, okay. So, anyway, I'm in line with the town manager. This had a public hearing, so you had a public hearing in which people were allowed to come and speak their mind and make a point, whether it was an establishment or the general public. And out of that meeting came the recommendation to, for the, for the, the council, yes, who has the right to look at and amend things, which by rights that represent the people. And when bylaws come up from a lot of work, it's, it's not always, um, I don't, just my personal belief, it's not always the councils, you know, it might be their prerogative, but maybe they should be listening to those, you know, the larger picture of people. They represent the people than represent what came up to them. In this case, it was a legal public hearing in order to do this, and their recommendation came out of that. So while I understand Sturbridge is doing one thing, and Charlton, I remember the conversation a lot of the communities, ten is it. I also know the comment that's usually made in this community that says, oh, we're not like other towns. Why do we have to do what other towns do? Well, now we're in a middle, right? We're in the middle of Charlton saying ten and Sturbridge saying eleven, and I guess Southbridge could do whatever it wants. But I'll go back to democracy and the public hearing, it came up as a ten to eight. I personally, again, my own feeling, I don't think you need to go past ten o'clock to sell marijuana. I think by then, you know, you got what you need. And if it's medical use, you probably have bought it during the day. If it's recreational, hopefully by then you've recreated enough. But, um, I, I don't know. I don't see why overturning what was, what was asked. It was asked to come up. It came up. It's asked to go to council for a blessing. You sometimes gotta let your other groups do what their, their job is too. I mean, that's why they're appointed. That's why people follow the, the protocol, the public hearing, the recommendation. It's a pastor. If this committee doesn't want to approve it as is, then it should not, so it should not be amended here. I will say that. If it doesn't want to go through here, take your amendment on the floor where the people can see it, because it does not belong here. What it comes here is you either send it up with a recommendation, or you send it up with a non-recommendation. That's what you do in subcommittee. You do not amend it in subcommittee.
I think you, you're correct.
And that's another sticking point to, to what happens. This is, subcommittee's a chance to air more information, get more involvement, maybe get people from this video to go to the town hall and say something if they don't like something. That's what, that's why bylaws get read three times, they're six weeks out, or whatever it is, and then they also have to wait two weeks or ten, whatever it is. There's the waiting period for them to even be enacted. People don't always follow that. That's a big thing in this community. You gotta make sure you've left it open for, for, um, appeal in some way, shape, or form. And those are all the rules that, that happen. But I would suggest it gets voted either up or down for whatever reason, and the chair of the subcommittee can mention it up there, what the discussion was. That's what the whole telling what happens at the meetings is about. And then you, you guys decide with the full council. It's not up to us to do that. Okay.
Counselor Lozo?
I have a different, uh, and difference of opinion on that, that process. This is the council. You are the council, and the subcommittee does the groundwork, and then we recommend to the full council. Circling back on this whole question of marijuana law, I'm not a marijuana user, never smoked or stuff, never touched or stuff, nor, nor do I plan on it. But, the reason why this thing came up to go to ten, and they were being very humble about getting ten, they didn't ever thought they'd get anything else higher than that, so they set the bar a little bit lower, was competition. Business competition, that's why this came forward. I talked to some of the people that own the, uh, the stores, and I said, well, you know, we're losing sales after a certain hour to the other town, which at the time they mentioned Charlton. You have one on Charlton's side, you have one on the Sturbridge side, and you have one on Main Street. So I think from the competitive edge, this suggestion, and I'm open for it, I mean, I was gonna vote for the ten o'clock, but going to eleven, I, I'm not against it, because if Sturbridge is eleven, you know, just like the, the liquor laws, I mean, we have two o'clock closings. We have Sturbridge people migrating into our businesses in Southbridge after twelve, when they had, they had twelve o'clock closing, and they have a one o'clock at, to go weekends. So, we garner the business because we do have a more lenient, as far as a bigger timeframe deserved. And I think from a business standpoint, I think, I think eleven would be better to compete with Sturbridge. But most of all, on the Charlton border, you're gonna be open an hour longer than Charlton. So, you'll, you'll get business from the other towns. I voted, I wasn't, when they, when the marijuana thing came forward the first time, everybody said, let's not do this. When it came the second time, the philosophy, the theory was, if we don't do it, the money's gonna go to the other towns, which, that's exactly what happened. The other towns started building their dispensaries that we built ours, and it becomes a competition. So for me, if the subcommittee recommends to amend, and the amendment fails, or you can amend it, that's, they're not against amending it. You are the council's subcommittee. You do the heavy lifting, and then when it goes up, we can also have the same debate, but most of the time, we do a lot of homework at this level. So, for me, I, I have no problem with the eleven, just on the competitive part of it. I think the dispensaries will, will be surprised you're willing to go to eleven, because they humbly requested ten.
Counselor Chanier?
During those public hearings, I didn't have the ability to go, because we had council meetings going on during that time with the, uh, budget transfers and all those end-of-the-year things that we normally have. Otherwise, I wouldn't have been there. I was able to go for a short time, and I had to leave to come up the, up the head. I just, I just trying as a counselor to make our town more business-friendly and be more competitive with our neighbors. Uh, I'd much rather see Southridge municipality, not businesses, uh, reap the benefits of extended hours and, and make them a successful business. And I think it's my job as a counselor to be able to help those businesses, to make it attractive to come to Southridge and to support them. And I think extending it for the one hour makes us competitive to Sturbridge and maybe a, a, a one-up on Charlton. People are gonna come through Southridge to go to Sturbridge. I'd much rather have them come to through Southridge and stay in Southridge. That's, that's why it's my thing. I don't use it. I don't plan on ever using it, but there's people that use it. Uh, I think if you look at the most recent study, that there's more people that use it now than drinking alcohol. It's a thing. So, that's my reason. It's to be more business-friendly.
Citizen member Clemens?
Thank you. So, I'm not opposed to, if, if the process is done right, and I disagree respectfully with Chairman Lozo, um, we've had these problems before where the, you know, the, what came, what's coming here before the subcommittee, who only exists with two or possibly three counselors, which does not represent the majority of council anyway, and the people have the right to see majority of council decide on a matter, then I recommend that you send it up and you amend it up there. That's, so, I don't have a problem. If you wanna go to eleven, you go to eleven, but give a chance for those then who went this far. You didn't get there, but others did. Give them a chance to know that, and, and put it up there. Put it up there, is that to amend it? So we're gonna recommend you amend it to, to whatever you're gonna amend, but up there, you can go to the eleven, and people will show up and either support this, not support this, but you'll get a better, or maybe nobody will show, 'cause, you know, that happens too. But I, I don't agree with, um, with the idea that you should amend it here. I think you should, you should send it up with it. You could put something in there that you, you know, that there's a, you can talk about that. We're looking at amending it this evening. You could say that in your, in your report, and then people can do it up there, but I think it should be more public. I think it should be, if you're gonna change it from what was on this, and people looked at this and said, oh, uh, there's a veterans, there's a meeting, general government, oh, they're gonna go ten till eight, great. And then suddenly out comes the meeting and it's eleven to eight. I thought they were only going ten to eight, you know, or something. So I'm just saying, it's just, I mean, uh, yeah, ten to eight. Uh, I'll make sure I'm reading right. I'm just, it, it's not, it's not as transparent, 'cause now this is gonna go on Monday. People might not see this, even though it comes out really quick. They're great up there on cable. They may not watch it, and they may think, so they may not have, they may not have a problem with ten to eight, but there might be a butters, there might be residents, there might be anybody who might have a problem with eleven to eight. So I'm just saying, I think it's fine to, to want it, and I get your point. Maybe I'll say, yeah, go ahead, eleven. If every, if the other people have no problem with it, that, that sent it up this way, that's great. But give them an opportunity to know that you were changing it. If there was no opportunity, that's not transparency. There was no opportunity to say, we're, because if you had asked the chair prior to coming in here, if you had brought it up to the chair two days ago, he could have amended this item to say that you wanted to change the time. But we did, that's, it's not been, there's been no disclosure that you wanted to change this line item to eleven, and you knew you wanted to. It's a shame. We could have, you could have had something in there. Could have had that, and then you could have, you know, uh, discuss amending this to an eleven. They're previously proposed ten to eight to eleven to eight, and that, then I would've been okay with that tonight. But I'm just, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to sending it up. I'm just opposed to amending it here. Amend it, amend it where the people can see you amend it. Just take your powers, you're my own people.
Right.
Because all the, all those other counselors, I gotta say this one with it, all this other counselors who's not on this committee, they represent people in this town too. They should have a right to be part of the process to, to that amendment, 'cause this is what came up. This is what, they might've come here tonight if they thought you were changing it. Maybe there's a, there are counselors who care about that, but they didn't know you were gonna bring that amendment up, so they're not here either. So if you just bring it up as eleven, then it...
I, I understand, but just, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Manager?
Well, the only reason I reference going back to the planning board is because the rest of this bylaw use, item three says hours of operation for any A U M E retail establishments shall be established by the planning board.
All right, so...
But no event shall, should facilities, that's the only reason I said, shouldn't go back to planning board, because the rest of that bylaw says that they say...
Say they're amended by the planning board?
No, established, shall be established.
Established. That's pretty, they're establishing the time.
But the charter is explicit in confirmation by council. I mean, I'm, I'm...
No, no, I'm just saying, no, I'm just saying the rest of that, that's why I just sent the inquiry as far as, doesn't go back for further discussion, because it does say clearly shall be established by the planning board. The hours of operation shall be established by the planning board. That's in the zone and bylaw itself. So they establish...
And that was established by, you did give them that right.
Right, and what I'm saying, I mean, it doesn't matter to me whether to go back to subcommittee. I mean, back to planning board. Uh, under, on any scenario, you can amend anything. They can amend it, you can amend it. Uh, then it can go back up, and the council can say, no, I wanna leave it the way it is. They can amend it that ways. I mean, this is a process of government. I mean...
It's a judicial board, and all you do is take away the rights.
Doesn't matter to me which way it's gonna go. Agree with you.
I can see, I can see eleven. I'm just saying that, that language.
Counselor Chanier?
I think part of the bylaw conflicts with the power of the charter, and the power of the charter is supreme over the bylaw.
Absolutely.
So I look at that part of it as being in conflict with the charter, and the charter would over, overrule what the bylaw would say. The charter gives us the power to change a bylaw, rescind the bylaw, and make action. I don't have a problem bringing it Monday night. I don't have that. And, and maybe as I think about this more later on, that council, I mean, citizen member Clemens is correct, we'll bring it up Monday night. The disappointing fact is the fact that I was hoping tonight that the planning board, or at least the chair, would have been here to explain to council what their reasons were to do this, and, and they're not here. So...
Let me just respond to that. I don't think the expectation was, it was clear, seven oh vote, change it to ten o'clock based on recommendations. We had owners of the establishment come to the planning board, or came to counselors, came to the town manager and said, would you entertain a change in zoning, and we'd like it to be ten o'clock? They did not mention anything about eleven o'clock or anything else. They said, we'd like to go to ten o'clock. How would we go through it? We went and we actually said, can you do it through a zoning variance? We sought legal opinion. No, you can't do it through a zoning variance. It can only have to go through a bylaw change. So all the discussion the whole time was, these establishments said, we wanna go to ten o'clock. How do we go about doing it? We talked to the council, we talked to, I talked to the chairman, how do we do it? We said we're gonna go to planning board. We went to planning board with the recommendation of those establishments that said, we want to go to ten o'clock. All right? They, they advocated for ten o'clock. They were at the meeting. That board voted seven to zero to support the change to ten o'clock. We want, if the council wants to say, okay, regardless of what these individuals that petitioned, right, and I, I, they petitioned for us to change it. That was their request. The planning board heard their request, voted based on what that public hearing input was and what those wanted. But if the council wants to say, okay, this is, we just wanna go to eleven o'clock? Ben?
I, I'm not, I'm not...
Excuse me. Please wait to be recognized for chair. Thank you. Counselor Lozo?
I'm not hung up on the process. We can debate the process all day long. Uh, I know that when the planning board sends up all of bylaw changes, when they sent us a packet, we amended the hell out of it. Okay? And we did it because that's the way we thought it should've been done, which was different than the belief of the planning board. Uh, the planning board is like, you know, when they recommend up to us, we, we amend it. I don't have a problem with what Denise is saying. If you wanna send it up as it is, and we amend it up there, that's fine. But, you know, the, the bottom line is, you are the council, and you can amend that subcommittee, and you can amend up there. This is a flavor right now. You don't have a problem with it. Send it up with a, a vote at, for ten o'clock. That's fine. If you wanna go back to planning board, that's fine.
No, I, I don't.
I'm not, I'm not. I don't feel strong. Either way, I just, our business has come for us here, and I think eleven o'clock, good problem. That's all.
All right.
How we get there, we'll let everybody else drive the vehicle.
All right. I, I, I've got a couple of comments about this. First of all, I'm not really sure what, why we need to amend it, bottom line. Um, we, we initially established these bylaws at one point in time. They were probably, there were probably good reasons for us to pick nine o'clock as the, as the limitation, uh, time, um, uh, 'cause this is what this is. This is a limitation. No event shall set facilities be open to the public between the hours of nine and eight A. M. So it's a limitation. Now, as far as the other language in your, in, uh, concerning the planning board setting the times, I agree that that's in there, and I don't see, I don't see that that's a conflict. This is a limitation by bylaw. I think the planning board has the power when they're, when they're evaluating these, um, these licenses to set a different, um, a different opening and closing time. So I don't see that as a conflict. Um, I'm, I'm actu, I'm persuaded by, um, citizen member Clemens's argument that if it's gonna be amended, it should be amended at the council, council level. Um, I don't see, you know, I don't see that that's, uh, that's, uh, a reason to, that we, we need to amend it here. The request for the amendment from the businesses, or I'm not sure how many businesses actually were requesting this amendment, but, uh, the request from them, uh, and after planning board review, uh, there was, you know, they went with ten, at ten P. M. I, I, at this point, would prefer to defer to that, um, and, uh, just really take up the issue as to whether or not we should recommend this to the town council. Now, I think in the agenda, um, the agenda doesn't offer, doesn't state that we are to, um, entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval, but I think the agenda should be amended for, uh, for that purpose. We should be entertaining a motion to recommend to town council for approval. So I'm gonna offer that as an, as an amendment to the agenda.
I, I don't know if it's approval, but for first reading, right? For first reading?
Usually it's...
It's not approval, because it's a first reading.
No, some, some, yeah. Subcommittee recommendation. All I do is recommend. Up to, up to council, and the council will deal with it and do something.
Then if you, if you go through, if I'm not mistaken, it's been a while, but I remember , uh, parts of it, there's a vote first, then there's a, there's separate items, and for a long time it wasn't done that way.
Well, no, all this is first reading, so you recommend it to...
You're permitting that they have, that they do, that they amend it, and then there are three readings, but you have to have a vote for the amendment to change it, and then you have the first reading, the second reading, the third reading. It's two line items. For a long time, they were combining them in this one.
I agree with you that we, when we send it up, then the town council has to read it three times before we can actually take a vote on it.
Right.
Okay, so, so we're recommending at the committee level that it be approved, but that doesn't, I mean, that doesn't mean, I mean, that the town council, when we get it up to the council level, we still have to have three readings.
And a vote.
And a vote. Okay?
Yeah.
At the end.
At the end.
Yeah, no, that's, we did that.
Counselor Lozo?
Just a quick minute. Even the council, that council always say, amend it on the last reading. You know, 'cause you can amend it on the first reading, second reading, third reading. If it's amended, they usually say, save it till the last reading, and then we'll, we'll amend it at that time, if there's a strong feeling. But yeah, the three readings first, and the vote after the third meeting.
Counselor Chanier?
So, Monday night, I, I agree, we can bring it up Monday night. Uh, Monday night, I could make the amendment, motion to amend Monday night, and then it would go for three readings as amended.
Right.
Okay.
So, I guess I have another, I guess I have a couple of other comments on this. Um, my, personally, I, I think we always should be viewing any type of bylaw change with, um, with a critical eye. Um, the bylaws are written for a reason. There was, there was, there was, uh, a vetting that went through, that went through just like we're doing with this. So it's important to know why the bylaw reads as it is, what were the reasons that the bylaw exists as is. Um, I'm not really clear that I, I know why the bylaw is written as is right now. Um, uh... why the bylaw is written as is right now. I think there are probably reasons why we picked 9:00 PM that were not, that have not been fully vetted at this level. That said, I do kind of equate retail marijuana establishments with liquor stores. In town, we don't have any liquor stores. Liquor stores are open until 11:00 with the exception of one that closes at 10:00. And the surrounding communities have picked later times. I don't know that we should be driven by what the surrounding communities are doing, and honestly, I'm not sure, I'm skeptical of the argument that they're at a competitive disadvantage since we're really talking about one hour. So, that said, I probably will support, you know, moving this up to council. But just in comments based on my comments.
So, you're looking for a motion anyway to go up to council?
Yes.
So, something like a motion to recommend to council that the Southbridge zoning bylaw section, blah, 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 to allow for the operation establishment 10 to 8:00 PM as submitted by the, by the, by the planning board.
Right.
And then you guys can figure it out up there.
Yeah.
I'll second that if that's the way you want it to be.
Yeah, well, the blah, blah. I know. That was really bad. I used to be really good at that. Adult establishments to allow for hours of operation except between 10:00 PM and 8:00 PM. Sorry. I should have said it better.
Okay, so, let's just, I think the, I think the agenda needs to be just amended to make it clear that, so I would like to move to amend the agenda to read that, this is, check number five is, "Review and discuss amending the Southbridge zoning bylaw, Section 8.7, adult-use marijuana establishments to allow for hours of operation except between 10:00 PM and 8:00 PM. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval." And that would be, that last sentence would be the amendment.
Right. So, I just made the motion on top of the item anyway. So, it's the same idea. You don't necessarily have to amend that because a motion can come out of any discussion that is brought up at a meeting. So, I know, but I think in the beginning, then that would have been, you could have done the very, like, I mean, could have just said, "Hey, that light on should bring this," and then...
I didn't catch it, so...
No, no, no. It's, it works either way. Because you can bring motions up at a meeting that come out of the discussion of the meeting.
So, then we do, then, all right, so then, then I would draw that, and then we'll just do, we'll do, we'll do it.
I made a motion. He seconded it. And you didn't take action on that, by the way. You needed to ask me.
I did not. Okay.
Did you get rid of it or...
So, going back, going back on citizen member Clemens's motion, any discussion?
To what you said earlier, Steve, I think this marijuana thing is new. Nobody really knew what the magic hours were when it was all put together with the community agreements, host agreements. I know that Jack and I have talked about Boston, the actual control system for marijuana state of Massachusetts, a little bit of disarray. So, I think moving forward, I think it's kind of a learning opportunity with this industry because it hasn't been here really that long. So, I think to your point, where's the magic number? I think that, what council discussed, and we'll find out, you know, where the magic number is for whatever reason it is.
Council, can you?
I think part of the issue, the bylaw came together quick because we originally voted down allowing marijuana establishments in this town because of confusion of the way the article was written for the vote. And that vote was brought back with a better understanding of what we were voting on. I think Councilor Adams was part of that back then, when he was first elected. And so, the people was acting in confusion, and I think that's part of the issue with the bylaw too. Here we are months into this vote that didn't pass, then brought back up later on for a revote, and then the bylaw had to come in because we had businesses lining up to get this. They needed something quick. And it's been no research done since then on the marijuana bylaw. This is the first time that I can ever remember. I could be wrong.
Go ahead. You.
I know, as chairman of council, we had a joint meeting with planning board with about 20 people all in the same room and hammered out the bylaw together.
Okay.
So, it wasn't put together hastily. It was well-thought-out, well-worked, and we worked together with the planning board. We had the meeting right in the council chambers. That was about six years ago. So, this, to your point of, yes, it was new, and that's what we determined, the marijuana, because this was going to be the first establishments in town. So, we were very diligent about how many were we going to allow? What corridors were they going to be allowed in? What sections of town they were going to be on? So, just as an aside, it wasn't in haste. It was very well-thought-out. But it was new, so there was not enough language about what time do we want this to go to, you know, and all that. So, the 9:00. I said, "Just send it up." We spent a lot of time discussing it. Let's just get it up there.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it's been six years ago, and now you have the establishments asking. And there you go. They asked for 10:00. That was, that's what they were happy with, why, you know, whatever. Whatever you guys decide to do. What I would suggest, though, is prior to the meeting, because you say you have questions, it doesn't stop you from contacting the planning board, the chair or somebody, and saying, "By the way, what was the impetus, and how many businesses were represented?" You could bring back information to council when you make your comments about this meeting. You could say what you've learned. Or you could encourage them to come and speak at the meeting and decide, you know, because it's going to be discussed. That's all. I'm just, those are suggestions to make it a little more, again, public-friendly, you know, and get the real reasons out. Why speculate? Let's find out.
Thank you.
And again, that's why we're having three readings. That's for the public.
Right.
Is the whole bylaw ready?
No, just, we were just going to do the change.
Any further discussion? We have a vote on the motion then? To, motion to recommend town council for approval of the bylaw change from 9:00 PM to 10:00 PM. All those in favor? unanimous, all members? Okay.
Just good helping discussion. Thank you.
Agenda item number six, adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?